We'll just plan to project. Can everyone in the back hear me? Okay, there we go. Great. Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us today for a town hall. My name is Kiana Perkins, and I serve as Senator Ossoff's Digital Outreach Manager and Deputy Press Secretary. Before we begin, I would like to note that there are members of Senator Ossoff's team stationed around the room. Please wave. If you have any issues that arise during the event, or if you need assistance with a federal agency, please visit our constituent services table in the mezzanine, or find one of Senator Ossoff's staff members to assist. Today's town hall is an opportunity for you to ask questions directly of the senator and to hear from him. Senator Ossoff will offer some opening remarks, and then he will take questions from the audience. We will have members of our team who will have microphones, but please stay in your seats, and we will call on those with questions and come to you. We seek today to maintain an environment of respect and decorum so that we can engage in a meaningful and productive dialogue. Now, please welcome Senator Ossoff.
Good morning. Good morning, Cobb County. It is a beautiful spring day, and I am so, so grateful for your presence. I am deeply honored to represent you in the United States Senate and to have this opportunity to engage in dialogue with you. I want to begin by thanking the Cobb Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Owens, and his deputies for taking care of us today and protecting and serving every day. Please join me in honoring them. I want to acknowledge some elected officials who are in attendance, and please forgive me, respected and esteemed colleagues, if I'm not aware of your presence, but Representative Lisa Campbell, Representative David Wilkerson are here. Representative Kim Schofield is here. Schofield, excuse me. Atlanta Beltline CEO Clyde Higgins is here. Where is Clyde? Clyde, thank you so much for all of your work. Thank you for your work advancing this extraordinary project. I want to thank the Cobb County Civic Center staff for opening this wonderful public space to all of us and for so well-serving the community. I also want to acknowledge Colonel Michael Parks, the commanding officer at Dobbins Air Reserve Base. Thank you, Colonel Parks, for your service to the nation and your stewardship of Dobbins. Let me speak for a moment about the last few years of the United States Senate, my approach to the office, how I have sought to serve you, my constituents, and the state of Georgia. I then want to touch on some immediately pressing issues, in particular related to the Medicaid program and access to health care, as well as the future of Georgia's CDC, our crown jewel, the preeminent public health organization, not just in the nation but in the world. And I want to discuss the position and conduct of the president and the administration. And then we will open this up for anything that you want to discuss. First of all, my highest obligation and my purpose is to serve you. And wherever, however, and whenever I can be of service, whether you have a big idea about federal policy, or your little cousin needs a passport renewed tomorrow, and anything in between, please just reach out to my office, and we endeavor to provide the most responsive and the highest-quality service available to you. And that focus on service has informed my approach to legislation and the legislative process in the U.S. Senate. My job is to deliver for the state. And as bitterly divided and even hateful as American politics can seem and has seemed now for many years, I have found that the best way to deliver for Georgia in the U.S. Senate is to build decent and respectful bipartisan working relationships, and to work with my colleagues on both sides of the aisle to advance legislation and initiatives that are in Georgia's interests and the nation's interest. When you consider, for example, the ailing state for many decades of America's public infrastructure, how essential our public infrastructure is to our quality of life, our public health, and our economic development, how we've been falling behind our major international competitors for decades, it's clear how important it was for us to come together as Democrats and Republicans and pass the bipartisan infrastructure law. This was the most significant investment in America's public infrastructure since the Eisenhower administration, getting lead pipes out of drinking water systems, upgrading seaports and airports across the state and the country, upgrading our surface transportation, upgrading our energy grid, upgrading freight and passenger rail across Georgia and the nation. And we passed it with nearly 70 votes in the United States Senate, Democrats and Republicans, which not only means that we got it done, but it means that the policy has staying power, and it sent an important signal to the nation and to the world that the two major political factions in America can, from time to time, put their differences aside and do what is in the national interest. The national interest. We passed major legislation to strengthen health care for our veterans with a strong bipartisan majority in the United States Senate, the PACT Act. And by the way, I'd like to ask every veteran, every military spouse, every active-duty or reserve component service member, please stand and be honored for your service by all the rest of us. Thank you. Thank you. But we passed, with strong bipartisan support, the PACT Act, which is the most significant effort to strengthen veterans' health care in many decades. It's aimed, in particular, at veterans who served in places where they experienced exposure to toxic chemicals. You've probably heard the most infamous example of this, the burn pits in Iraq and Afghanistan, service members who were forward-deployed inhaling the fumes from the public, open combustion of dangerous substances, then developing cancers and neurodegenerative diseases, but having to slam their heads into the brick wall of the VA bureaucracy for years and years to prove that their illness is service-connected. Well, now, for those veterans who were deployed to those places where there was known risk of toxic exposure, the presumption is that those diseases are service-connected, which can spare them years of onerous and stressful adjudication through the VA process, when what they need is health care. We got that done with bipartisan margins in the United States Senate, and it's an example of what we can achieve when we work together. Alongside the infrastructure law, we passed a series of manufacturing incentives through the Inflation Reduction Act, which have driven private investment into advanced manufacturing and the industries of the future here in Georgia and across the country. In fact, Georgia has benefited from that legislation and those manufacturing incentives more than just about any other state in the country. You've seen the major announcements of dramatic expansion and acceleration at electric vehicle and battery manufacturing facilities in Georgia, advanced energy, solar energy manufacturing projects here in Georgia, semiconductor and chip-related manufacturing here in Georgia. All of that is helping propel Georgia to the lead as a hub for manufacturing and industrial activity in the most strategic and most advanced industries that are crucial to our economic future and to our national security. I have taken very seriously my obligations to engage in oversight and investigations. You all know that my background before I was elected, I led a company that investigated war crimes, human rights abuses, official corruption around the world. And I think that, in some ways, Congress has neglected now for decades the vigorous use of our oversight authorities. I have led multiple long-term bipartisan investigations of human rights and civil rights abuses in prisons and jails across the country. And I cannot overemphasize or overstate the depth of the human rights crisis behind bars in the United States unfolding every day. It's a national shame that should shock our conscience. One of the investigations I led, these were all, by the way, bipartisan investigations, revealed that in two-thirds of federal prisons that housed female inmates, female inmates had been sexually abused by members of prison staff, including at one facility by not just the warden, but the chaplain. One investigation that I led focused on the U.S. Penitentiary here in Atlanta found that for the better part of a decade, Bureau of Prisons leadership had known that there was rampant corruption and human rights abuses and violence and civil rights abuses and organized criminal activity inside of the prison, that contraband was flowing freely in and out of the prison. Bureau of Prisons leadership had been warned that it posed a threat to public safety, not just here in Atlanta, but across the southeast region, but they had done nothing. So I issued a subpoena to compel the testimony of the director of the Bureau of Prisons and hold him accountable. And on the basis of this investigative work, I wrote with a Republican colleague legislation called the Federal Prison Oversight Act, which overhauls the oversight of our federal prison system, which requires now routine surprise inspections of every single federal prison facility by the Department of Justice Inspector General's Office, which creates a new independent office of the Ombudsman for Federal Prisons at the Department of Justice and a hotline for inmates and their attorneys to report allegations of civil rights abuses outside of the chain of command at that facility because of what we found about how those kinds of complaints were being handled. That legislation passed the U.S. Senate, it passed the U.S. House, and it became law, and it is now the law of the land. And it was a bipartisan bill built on bipartisan investigations, and it may not have led the headlines, but that is the real substantive work of legislating. And it has been a pleasure to serve the state. But as committed as I am to bipartisanship, I'm also not going to mince words with you about the crisis that we face at this moment. Because the crisis that we face at this moment is deeper than the contest between the political parties, and it's deeper than ideological differences between liberals and progressives and conservatives and moderates. This is a crisis about the very character and nature and substance of our republic, about whether we will adhere to our Constitution, whether the most powerful officials in the country are bound by the rule of law. You've seen, just in the last few months, the president began by pardoning militiamen and rioters who had sacked the United States Capitol and assaulted law enforcement officers. He has purged the federal government of independent watchdogs who investigate corruption and abuse. He has filled the highest and most fearsome offices, not just with partisan loyalists, but with personal loyalists, and publicly called upon those personal loyalists to target and investigate and intimidate and prosecute his critics and his political adversaries. He is using fear and intimidation and coercion in a campaign of vengeance unlike anything we've ever seen in the history of the republic. We have never seen a president commit themselves to the destruction of their political opposition through the use of official power. It has never happened in the United States before, and that's exactly what we're seeing right now, and it should chill us all to the bone regardless of our political party. Now, I've got a lot of Republican colleagues I admire and respect, a lot of Republican friends and supporters here in Georgia. One of the things I remind them is that one day the shoe will be on the other foot. Every expansion of executive authority beyond all precedent, every shattering of norms, there's a risk that one day it'll be wielded by a Democratic president. How then will those who may agree with President Trump on policy feel about this unbelievable expansion of presidential power? We are seeing official coercion used to intimidate and bend the entire legal profession to the president's personal will. And by the way, and you know, save us very bluntly, shame on those law firms who have As we speak, in the land of the free and the home of the brave, in a country that is meant to be a beacon to the world for tolerance of dissent and free speech and open vigorous democracy, we're seeing foreign university students who are legally here snatched up by masked federal agents and thrown into Homeland Security jails for eventual deportation for the apparent offense of writing op-eds critical of U.S. foreign policy or engaging in protest. What message does that send to the world about what the United States is becoming? You know, folks don't want to travel here right now. You all seen that? They're being warned that their phones will be searched at the border for signs of criticism of the sitting president. That doesn't just impact tourism, by the way. It impacts business, research. People don't want to come here and start businesses. People don't want to come here and do research. They feel the United States is no longer a free and open society. Speaking of research, and then we'll open this up for questions. The war on the CDC is so foolish, so short-sighted, so without any rational policy justification, that every single Georgian, and by the way, that includes the governor of Georgia, should This is the preeminent public health institution in the nation and in the world. You know, you don't know necessarily the public health crises that are avoided. That's the point. And by the way, I'm all for government efficiency, and I don't believe federal programs are sacred or anyone's entitled to a federal job. It has to serve the public interest. But there is nothing efficient about this. When you randomly fire hundreds of thousands of people, and then you are scrambling to rehire them because you realize you accidentally fired the people who protect the nuclear weapons, and you accidentally fired the people who protect us from Ebola, and you accidentally fired the people who manned the Veterans Crisis Hotline, no private sector executive would get away with this. Now, 40% of all children in Georgia are covered by Medicaid. Half of all births in Georgia, half of all births are covered by Medicaid. 70% of all seniors in nursing homes in Georgia are covered by Medicaid. And already, our state leaders partisan and self-defeating and selfish decision not to expand Medicaid in Georgia has sentenced many Georgians unnecessarily to suffering and death and run hospitals into bankruptcy in our state. And if the GOP proceeds to gut the Medicaid program, the impact on maternal health and infant and pediatric health in this state will be devastating. So we need to raise our voices, regardless of our politics, against these proposed cuts to the Medicaid program that will put maternal health and infant health in Georgia at risk. Thank you so much for being here. We're going to open this up for your questions now. And I'll just say this, you know, we're all Georgians, we're all Americans, we may not see eye to eye on the issues. I welcome your candid feedback, I welcome your criticism, I welcome tough questions. Let's just stay connected to the fact that we're all here together, we're all citizens. Let's keep this civil. Turn to your neighbor and introduce yourself for a moment.
Okay? All right. Well, Senator...
Let's have a good discussion. Okay, Kiana?
All right. Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you, Senator, for those remarks. I want to reiterate what the senator said and just establish a few ground rules and expectations for our Q and A session. If you have a question, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. We do ask that you limit your speaking time to one minute so we can keep the conversation moving and get to as many questions as we can. When called upon for a question, please stand, and a member of our team will meet you with a microphone. Before asking your question, please state your first name and your city of residence. In the event that we're not able to hear from everyone who has a question, please find a member of Senator Ossoff's staff who will get your question to the senator at the conclusion of the event. Most importantly, please be courteous, concise, and respectful of everyone's time. Thank you for your consideration and cooperation. And with that, we'll go to the left side for our first question, the lady in the black blazer and a green lanyard on the end.
Good morning, Senator Ossoff. I'm originally from the... My name is Arjo. I live here in Smyrna City. I'm originally from the Philippines. I'm really concerned about the dismantling of the USAID. As a former government employee before I came here in the USA, we have so many projects impacting marginalized communities, especially indigenous peoples' communities. So I came from that indigenous peoples' communities. With this USAID being dismantled, what are your thoughts and what are the implications, especially on international cooperation among countries benefiting from USAID?
Thank you so much for the question. By the way, I'm going to try to be concise so that we can get to as many questions as possible. So first of all, USAID is an agency established in statute by law by the United States Congress. So the entire endeavor of unilaterally disbanding and destroying it at the whim of a president, by the way, a process managed by the wealthiest man in the world who's been elected to no office and confirmed by the Senate to no office, is, in my view, of highly questionable legality. As a policy matter, it too is self-defeating, just like destroying research and development in the United States is self-defeating. Trying to cancel clinical trials run through the NIH is self-defeating. Destroying America's research enterprise will pay for it for a century in lives lost and opportunities lost. So too will we pay for a century if we retreat from our humanitarian mission around the world, which saves lives, creates opportunity, prevents instability, helps us to wield influence around the globe. Who do you think is filling the vacuum when the United States leads, our geopolitical rivals? And the notion that, you know, this is, as, by the way, CARE, right here in Georgia, a wonderful organization, under severe strain because of the incompetent management of international aid by this administration. Thank you so much for your question. Kiana?
Great. We'll have our next question right here in the second row, the lady in the white pullover.
Hello, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Debbie. I'm from Marietta.
Hi, Debbie.
Hi. Hello, Senator... Oh, sorry. Okay. Hello, Senator Office. Thank you for coming to Cobb County, and thank you for everything you do for the state of Georgia. I sort of have two questions, but what is the plan if he declares martial law to stop, you know, to stop us? I'm very concerned about our protests, then he might do it, and then we won't have another election. Is there anything Congress or the Senate can do if he declares that? And my second question is, how do we undo the damage that he's done?
Thank you.
What is going to be done?
I have no doubt that this president, given his authoritarian impulses, his desire to rule as a king by decree, and his contempt for those who criticize and disagree with him, would relish the opportunity to try to invoke or wield emergency powers. That cannot deter us as citizens from peacefully exercising every constitutional right to which we are entitled as American citizens to speak out and to advocate for the kind of country that we want to live in. And we will not be deterred from exercising our right as citizens. This country was founded on a rejection of kings. And my view is that the American people have no interest in this new experiment in monarchy that this president is trying to impose. I think that it is deeper than political party. I'm hearing from Republicans and independents here in Georgia who are horrified, horrified, that we have a president who would overtly defy federal judicial orders and show that kind of contempt for the rule of law and the Constitution. Look, I think, in the short term, because you asked, you know, what's the plan? Let me say, first of all, there is no magic button that I'm not pushing. There is no magic button that, if only we had the will to press it, would put a stop to this. And there is no long-forgotten, archaic tool of Senate procedure which, if only rediscovered, would put a stop to this. But public leadership, informing the public, for example, I don't think there's any part of this state, doesn't matter its politics, economy, where I said, hey, do you want to slash the health care system, defund your hospital, and leave pregnant women and infant children without health care in order to pay for a tax cut for the wealthiest people in the country? That is not a popular program, and that is their program. And by exposing it as such, we are putting pressure on those who are considering voting for it in a way that I think is reducing their legislative scope to do damage. Ultimately, the only path out of this is to regain power in Congress. Okay?
Next, what's here from the lady in the middle? If you wouldn't mind stepping, yes, you, if you wouldn't mind stepping out to the aisle to meet David with the microphone to ask your question. Yes, you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Christine, and I'm from Tucker, Georgia.
Hi, Christine. Good to see you.
Good to see you. I have supported you from the very beginning when you ran the first time, and you didn't live in my district, but I was there at your very first rally, and I will be there with you till the very end.
Oh, thank you, Christine.
You're welcome. So after the last presidential election, I was so depressed.
Yeah.
I couldn't even leave my house. I couldn't watch the news. And I sat there and I thought to myself, what can I do, just me as one person, do to change the way that I feel and the way that I felt other people felt? So I created something called the Pocket Book Brigade, and we've been holding marches in Tucker, Georgia. Our last march was this past Saturday, and we had 2,000 people that came. We have another march coming on May the 10th about maternal mortality in Georgia.
Good.
Okay? What I want to know is, what else can I do to help you to do what we need to do to turn the tide and get back the leadership that we need in Washington? What other things? Do I have to do more marches? I'm going to be on a radio show this coming Wednesday. They want to talk to me about the Pocket Book Brigade. What can I do on that show to talk about what we need to do so that I can do the most that I possibly can to serve what you're doing to help us to win back our country?
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
And thank you for your advocacy and your activism and for being an engaged citizen. And I think that you are doing it right now by participating in this open dialogue with elected officials. You are doing it by organizing peaceful... And thank you for your advocacy and your activism and for being an engaged citizen. And I think that you are doing it right now by participating in this open dialogue with elected officials. You are doing it by organizing peaceful protest. Peaceful protest matters. Peaceful protest can change history. And when we are dealing with a president who wishes to impose his will by decree on the American people, as if a king, then I think that we have an obligation peacefully to protest that. We have an obligation as citizens to raise our voices against it. And I think you're exactly right to highlight maternal mortality here in Georgia. We have among the highest maternal mortality rates in the United States. For many years in Georgia, maternal mortality for black women was higher than maternal mortality in Iraq, a country that was in a state of armed conflict. Half of our counties have no OB-GYN physician. And the ultra draconian abortion ban that's been imposed in this state is forcing women, as we've heard from doctors consistently from the last year in official proceedings, forcing women to proceed with non-viable and high-risk pregnancies, forcing them to travel across state lines to get medical care that they need for their health or for their lives, requiring women to develop more and more severe infections, cases of sepsis, even to require hysterectomies because vital medical care is delayed. And if the Medicaid program is gutted, as I said, and this is maybe the most important message from me to you and members of the press today, if the Medicaid program is gutted as proposed, the impact on maternal health and infant health in Georgia will be catastrophic. Thank you so much, Christine, for your advocacy.
Great. Thank you, Christine. Next, we'll hear from the lady on the middle row, right here with the sunglasses and a bun. Yes. Very cute bun, Mike.
I'm sorry. There you are, ma'am. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Hello. My name is Sarah Boim. I'm a resident of Decatur. I actually have two questions for you. The first, I'm with a coalition of fired CDC employees called Fired But Fighting. So we saw on your website that you've been appointed to the Appropriations Committee. We are deeply concerned about the cuts to CDC and proposed cuts to HHS in fiscal year '26. What are three ways you'll do, what are three things you'll do to support HHS and public health in general during fiscal year '26? And the second is, I was at the CDC's support rallies outside Royal Campus where Senator Warnock showed up and gave a speech. I also attended a roundtable he hosted where fired CDC employees and federal employees and a few different federal employees were able to share our stories and ask for help directly. So he didn't just listen. He signed a letter to Secretary Kennedy demanding answers, added resources for fired feds to his website, and assigned dedicated staffer to assist us individually. Your office has put out a few press releases, but we want to know why you're not in lockstep with Senator Warnock in supporting us.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And in fact, I was pleased to join Senator Warnock in sending that letter to Secretary Kennedy. In fact, I recall at, I think about 2:00 AM, when we were debating Mr. Kennedy's prospective confirmation to the US Senate. And those of us who were in opposition to his confirmation were holding the Senate floor all night in opposition. I was honored to read there on the Senate floor a letter that had been sent to me by a member of CDC staff who had been placed on probation for the apparent offense of being a professional dedicated to health equity, which, under our new official state ideology, is apparently prohibited. The work that she did was about increasing access to preventative medicine and pediatric healthcare in underserved communities, helping people who, by virtue of their income or their geography, didn't have access to the healthcare system. Health equity. And not only was she put on leave for doing that work, but she was doxxed and her public information posted on the internet, and she was receiving threats for having done that work. So I will remain an outspoken champion of Georgia's CDC and continue to oppose both through the legislative process, as you noted, as an appropriator, the proposed deep cuts to the CDC's budget, continue to vigorously oppose and expose the foolishness of these mass firings at the CDC, and champion the CDC's work nationally and internationally as a proud representative. And thank you so much for your service to the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, let's hear from the lady in the second row with the glasses and the scarf.
Good morning, Senator. Bernessa Drayton from Powder Springs, Georgia.
Good morning, Bernessa.
Good morning, sir. As a mom of four boys, one being a rising senior who is focused in wanting to attend an HBCU, my concerns right now are primarily with the Department, the Department of Education and its current leadership. Wanted to get your thoughts on, you know, what you are thinking as far as addressing, you know, concerns that they may have with the dismantling of the Department of Education and funding of HBCUs. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bernessa. And let me say, you know, I have, I have been and will remain a champion for Georgia's HBCUs, and I'm grateful to the extraordinary work that Georgia's HBCUs do as jewels in America's system of higher education. The extraordinary work. And you may recall that, you know, in the war on all things diversity that this administration has launched in the early weeks, they shut down the application process for HBCU scholarships, aimed in particular at agricultural professions. You know, Fort Valley State University, for example, which trains next generation of agricultural professionals. And within hours, I was speaking out forcefully in opposition, challenging the administration to defend this effort to shut down scholarships for HBCUs in Georgia and across the country. And a few hours later, they backed down and they reopened that program. And it was not just my voice, but all of our voices together that made that difference. It reminds me, I was just speaking with someone about this yesterday, the war on all things diversity. I don't know if you guys saw this, but in the library at the Naval Academy in Annapolis, you now cannot find a book about the Holocaust because it was about a woman's perspective on surviving the Holocaust. That book is now banned from the library at the Naval Academy. But you can still get Mein Kampf. Disgraceful is the right word. As for the Department of Education, look, the clear will of the administration is to abolish the Department of Education, which would have an extraordinarily disruptive impact on education across Georgia, would disrupt the provision of services to disabled students and special needs students, would disrupt the provision of school meal programs that students rely upon across the state, and would throw the entire process of educational administration for primary and secondary school education into chaos. Now, this, this president does not have the legal authority to simply abolish the Department of Education. Not that that is stopping him from trying to do things, but that will be, I think, a very important fight through the appropriations process, as was mentioned in Congress. And I suspect that there are some Republican members who are becoming squeamish about the proposal, given how much they're hearing from teachers, educators, administrators, concerned parents, and faculty back home. Thank you, Bernessa.
Thank you. Next, let's hear from the gentleman in the back in the gray polo and the glasses. Yes.
Hello, sir.
I appreciate it. Okay, thanks for holding on to me. My name is Kevin Pettis.
Hey, Kevin.
And since 1984, I've been living here and it's called Mayretta, not Marietta. Just want to make that clear. And I'm here with my CDC colleagues. Everybody from CDC, stand up. Stand up so they see us, so they know who we are. Now, I want, I want everybody to know that for 30 years, I have been giving myself, my time, and my efforts to making sure public health is top priority for us, not only here at CDC, but also to serve Georgia and the country as a whole. I, I want to get back to common sense, and I think we've lost that. Members that I've worked with for the 30, past 30 years are working in the laboratory, and we were told that our efforts and what we were doing there was not necessary. But we are protecting you and everybody else, and I want everybody to know that that's our mission and our goal. So what are you going to do to get us back to common sense, to get us back to having us continue to do what we love to do, which is serve the public, to keep everybody safe, to get everybody happy, to keep everybody whole, so that we can continue to move forward as a country?
Thank you so much. And thank you again. Thank you to you and your colleagues for the work that you've done for so many years. Growing up in Georgia, I have always been so proud to live among the heroes at the CDC. Always felt a surge of pride when I drove by the CDC's campus and thought to myself, wow, right here in Georgia, that's where they base the work that is eradicating disease around the world. This is, this is the site that we deploy the epidemiologists who work to prevent disease outbreaks in every part of our planet and protect the American people from threats to public health, threats to public safety. So I am 100% in your corner, and I will use every tool at my disposal in the legislative process to defend you as a public advocate, as a legislator, as a member of the Appropriations Committee and the Intelligence Committee. Perhaps the most important thing that we have to do is to inform the public of how dire the threat to public health is resulting from this war on the CDC. Because this gets me back to something that I said at the outset of this event, which I know is not easy to hear, but I have to level with you. There is no button that I can simply press that I'm not pressing, or some tool of procedure that I can use that I'm not using that will reverse what they're doing. Ultimately, it will come down to whether or not the American people see and understand that they're being put at risk, not just for the next six months, but for the next 60 years, by this destruction of our public health infrastructure and research. Let me, I was in, of course, public health research, research across the board. I was at an event a couple of weeks ago and a gentleman came up to me, and he said that his son was an astrophysicist who had just completed a degree program at one of the most prestigious universities in the country, top of his field, passion for public service. But because it was a so-called probationary employee, and you all know what that means. It just means recently hired personnel. When you fire everyone who was recently hired simply because they were recently hired, with no regard for their individual performance or the importance of the role that they fill, you are simply denying the American people access to the newest, most recently trained talent that wants to serve the public. So this man's son, an astrophysicist, had been fired in one of these mass firings of probationary employees, no longer able to serve the American people as a public servant, which was his will. And he wasn't doing that for the money. None of you all went to work at the CDC for the money. You went to work at the CDC because you care about public health. So this young astrophysicist, well, where is he working now? Any guesses? Beijing. Brain drain. If we deter talent from serving the American people, well, the rest of the world, including our rivals, are more than willing to take advantage of their talents and skills. Thank you, sir, for your question and for your service.
Thank you. For the next question, let's stay on this side of the room with the gentleman in the middle with his hand raised here. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind stepping out.
Hi. My name is Paul. I'm from Marietta, Georgia. And me as a minority and living in Georgia, currently, I'm afraid to leave my house without my passport. I'm afraid to go to the movie theaters. I'm afraid to go to the grocery store. I'm afraid to leave my house. This isn't an issue that can be talked about next election or next presidency. I may not be here. I am a natural-born citizen. I was born in Northside Hospital, but that does not matter because people with my skin color are not receiving due process. I've heard a lot of what can we do in two years and four years from now, but I may not be here. I might be in a concentration camp. I might be in a work camp. I may not be able to return to my home. What are you going to do to represent me and the immigrant community in Georgia so that we can feel safe to leave our house?
Thank you, Paul. I noted, Paul, and thank you for your question, that, and this is about fear as a political tool and as a tool of government. I noted that folks from around the world don't want to come to the United States anymore because they fear what might happen at our border. And you just heard from Paul, his firsthand experience about how fear functions right here at home. People across the country are fearful, and they are fearful by design. That is the point. The point is to make people afraid, afraid to dissent, or simply afraid to be here at all. And the erosion of civil rights and civil liberties in this country right now is happening at so swift a rate. It is unlike anything we've seen in American history. An administration that is defying federal judges, dismissing the importance of due process, which, again, if you refer to the founding of our country, a country founded on the rejection of monarchy, there's a reason that one of the rights enshrined in the Constitution is the right to due process, to stop arbitrary punishment by decree of a king. One of the very first things I did when this administration took power and after Marco Rubio went down to El Salvador and met with the dictator in El Salvador, was to launch an inquiry with the Department of Justice and Department of State about their intentions with respect to that foreign gulag, to which not only are they presently sending immigration detainees who have not been afforded due process, but to which the President of the United States is openly musing about sending American citizens. So I hope that we can all take a step back, no matter our, and Paul, this gets to your point about how do we respond? We all got to take a step back from whatever our political affiliation, our past voting behavior, our preferences might be, and just ask ourselves the question, if the President of the United States is threatening to send American citizens to foreign gulags, and their official position is that once they've sent you there, or even if they made a mistake, there's nothing they can do about it, this requires us as Americans to reject and defeat authoritarianism, putting aside whatever other differences we might have on public policy. So Paul, to your question, I have been and I will remain a vigorous advocate for civil rights and civil liberties for everyone in this country, hold administration officials to account when they come and testify before the Congress, send an open inquiries demanding answers into their conduct at every opportunity where I believe it threatens my constituents and their freedom. Thank you so much for your question, Paul. Yeah, go ahead, Paul. Well, Paul, I will use every authority and every power that I have as an elected official to protect my constituents. We all have a role to play here as citizens, to inform the public about what's happening to our country and to rally opposition to it. And, you know, my team and I will be available to you, and, you know, we're at your fingertips whenever you need help, and let's work creatively together to identify more solutions. Thank you so much, Paul. Thank you so much, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Next, let's move to this side in the very back, white t-shirt with your hand raised. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
So you keep saying that there isn't a magic button.
Yeah.
And I recognize that you're a senator and not in the House, and everything that Trump is doing is leading us down an authoritative rule. Why are there no calls for impeachment? This is unacceptable. I will not live in an authoritative country, and neither will any of these people. You can do more. Think outside the box. He needs to be impeached. I will not live like this. My dad is retired Full Bird Army Colonel. My parents are healthcare. I have a son with autism. I have kids that attend Title I school. Do you think that there's nothing can be done? No. Do something more. I like you, and I will vote for you if you are brave and you do what we need. We need him impeached. We need him removed.
Thank you, ma'am. There is no doubt that this president's conduct has already exceeded any prior standard for impeachment by the United States House of Representatives. I mean, I saw just 48 hours ago, he is granting audiences to people who buy his meme coin. Did you guys see this? So it is, in our corrupt political system, it is a standard practice, tragically, for elected officials to grant audiences and time to people in exchange for campaign contributions. He is granting audiences to people who purchase the meme coin that directly enriches him. So where is everybody who was so furious about Hunter Biden's paintings? Which, by the way, I do not defend, when the sitting President of the United States is selling access for what are effectively payments directly to him? There is no question that that rises to the level of an impeachable offense. And the reality is that that's just one of many, defying a federal court order, for example. So I agree with you. But as I said at the beginning, I also have no choice but to be candid with you about the situation that we face and the tools that are at our disposal, as strongly as I agree with you, ma'am. And I regret if this is an unwelcome response, but my job is to be honest with you. The only way to achieve what you want to achieve is to have a majority in the United States House of Representatives. And there is, and, believe me, I'm working on it every single day, every single day. And I want to work creatively with you to identify more solutions, more that I can do. And let's make sure that a member of my team contacts you so we can continue the conversation. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We have time for two more questions. Let's head right here in the middle, lady who's had her hand raised.
Hi, my name is Abby. And before I ask my question, just one mention.
Of course.
The hand raised thing, while it is nice, it is not handicap accessible way to ask questions, so maybe consider that in the future.
And ma'am, I believe, I can, I can correct my front, but I believe that we canvassed those who have particular needs here in advance, whether they required any particular assistance. But we will work with you to try to identify even more accessible ways to promote participation.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So my name is Abby. I am from Decatur. I was also fired from CDC as a probationary person. And, you know, you've done a really good job of telling some of the stories of probationary folks, but with all due respect, you've not answered our questions.
Okay, what are your questions that I have not answered? Please be specific.
You are on the Appropriations Committee?
Yes.
Your press releases have talked about the power of this committee. We want to know three ways in which, in the fiscal year 2026 budget, you are going to advocate for public health. We want to know why we have gotten no response from your staff. We are a huge coalition. We have emailed, we have called, we have tried many times to meet with you and your staff to talk about the concerns that we have from public health, and we have been ignored. We are a huge constituency, and we protect you and everyone else in this room from public health disaster. Finally, you noted that you signed the letter to HHS Secretary Kennedy. There was one signed yesterday about Head Start. Your signature was not on it. There are 18,000 preschool children in Georgia that rely on Head Start. There was another letter on April 2nd about the public health funding that's been clawed back from states. The state, your signature was not on that one either. The state of Georgia is expected to lose $330 million in critical public health funding. There was another letter on April 1st that was signed by over 30 Democrats in the U.S. Senate, calling on Kennedy to answer for the firing of thousands of federal workers, including 1,300 in Georgia that worked at CDC. You did not sign that letter either. So how are we to trust you, to support us, if you can't even sign a letter? That is the lowest form of support.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you for your passion. Thank you for the specificity of your question, which I will answer with specificity. And let me say that this is what democracy is all about, folks. And I welcome tough questions. I welcome criticism. I ask to be held accountable. That's the purpose of events like this, and unlike some of my colleagues, we have not prescreened these questions. We're not, I'm not reading them from a list that my staff gave me. We're opening it up to my constituents. So through the appropriations process, all right, you asked for three specific things that I will do. And by the way, I will also call you within the next five days, having gotten together with my team, to identify in greater detail exactly what we can do, and I will make sure that your organization has a meeting in the next week with members of my health policy team. In fact, we can set that up, we can set that up for today. Where is Tara? Tara is right here. Tara leads health policy for my office. You guys, if you want to, you can meet with her today, and I'll speak with you by phone within the next week. Thank you for coming, and thank you for holding me accountable. Now, and hold on, Neil, before you get all our info, let me just finish answering the question. Okay. As an appropriator, CDC accounts, other HHS public health accounts, and global health accounts will be among my priorities on the Appropriations Committee, provided we can get bipartisan cooperation to do an actual budget. Right, you'll recall what happened just a couple of months ago, when, on a partisan basis, Republicans in Congress basically signed a blank check for the administration. I will work to avoid that. I will work to make sure that CDC funding, HHS public health funding, and global health funding are robust and protected, and I will continue to do everything I can to hold accountable the secretary and the new leadership at CDC for these outrageous cuts to the CDC's workforce, which put the American people at risk. Let's continue the conversation. Thank you so much for asking me the question, and thank you all for your service to public health and global health. All right?
Thank you. For our final question, let's go here to the second row, David. Blue jacket? Yes.
Hello, ma'am.
My name is Cheryl, and I'm living in Marietta. My question is about the Congress. I don't understand how the Congress cannot take their position with the president. We have a lot of Republicans, they come up, they don't like this, they're not going to support this, but then when it comes down to it, the president is the one making the call, and Congress is just sitting back, saying, oh, well. Now, isn't Congress supposed to be held for the constituents? They haven't done anything in the last eight years that I can think they...
And it's a great, and I regret that it's our final question, but we will work to, I'll make sure members of my team are available to ask and answer any further questions that you have. So ma'am, to your point. Right now, I see three kinds of Republican senators. You've got a group of MAGA true believers. They're all in, they're diehard, personal loyalties. You've got a group who maybe don't really have any particular beliefs, except that they really love being members of the Senate. And then you've got a group who know that this is wrong, but tell themselves all kinds of stories, push themselves to all kinds of lengths, avoid anything that happens. Maybe they tell themselves that, well, if they fall under sort of this, they'll be replaced by a true believer that'd rather be quietly, privately raising concerns than doing so publicly. That is the wrong moral choice. They've forgotten that we're elected to stick to your terms for a reason, and that's to steal our spines, to do the right thing, even when it's unpopular. That's the purpose of the Senate. Now, many of these Senate Republicans, they'll say to me quietly, we know we act as such. And what I say to them is, your oath of office and your duty to the American people in the United States require you to act in public now, because for all the reasons that we've discussed, and because there is no magic button, that the minority in Congress can simply push the big fat button. You Republicans, you are elected Republicans of conscience, Republicans who can act with faith to stand with us in opposition to a program and administration that is unhuman, un-American, and unprolific. I will continue to have those vigorous conversations, honest conversations, directly with my colleagues on the other side of the aisle. I thank you for your attendance and for your question. I want to emphasize again, I mentioned at the top, that one thing I wanted to highlight in particular is the threat to the health of pregnant women and newborn babies in Georgia if they proceed with these proposed drastic cuts to the Medicaid program. Look, in terms of looking for signs of life, you know, I, we had an all-night debate of the budget resolution about a month ago, and I offered an amendment that would prohibit any Medicaid cuts, that would reduce access to obstetric or pediatric healthcare. Couple of my Republican colleagues crossed over the aisle to vote for it. A few weeks later, we had another all-night budget debate. I offered an amendment to reverse all cuts to the Social Security Administration that have been ordered by Elon Musk. A few more Republican senators crossed over the aisles, feeling the heat, and that is where you come in. Because your attendance at events like this, your engagement in peaceful protest, the phone calls, and the emails, and the letters that you are pouring into congressional offices, and please keep them coming to mind, and I welcome them. Every demonstration by the American people that you reject and oppose what's happening right now, and that you're prepared to hold accountable those elected officials who go along with it, increases the pressure on my Republican colleagues and all of us to do the right thing. Do not forget your power as citizens. In this country, the power is still with the people. It's in our hands, it's in your hands. You have a voice, you have a vote. You've made history as Georgians, participating in our democracy before. So do not lose hope. Thank you for coming. Thank you for holding me accountable. It is my pleasure to serve you. We will get through this together. Thank you.
I'm John, I'm a channel lover.
I think we have the same question. I just want to see if I could get the spelling of your name.
Yes, K-A-T-E-D-E-N-N-Y.
And where about are you from?
I live in Avondale Estates. It's right outside of...
Oh, gosh. I know where that is.
Decatur, it's so cute. I live there.
I live right near there.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Do you mind if I ask you a question just about how you think it went today, and how satisfied you were with what Senator Ossoff told you?
Of course, yes.
Say your name again.
My name is Kate Denny.
Okay, from Avondale.
From Avondale, and...
Yeah, what do you think?
Well, I came to the John Ossoff Town Hall today, and I'm, I'm feeling hopeful because I'm just a person that has hope, but I'm disappointed, honestly, in a lot of his answers. I'll vote for him, I'm a Democrat, I think he mostly aligns with what I believe in, but I don't think he's doing enough.
You think he's not trying hard enough?
I don't, I don't know. He says there's no magic button, but Trump needs to be impeached. That is, that is how we get through this. I don't think we're going to last through the midterms necessarily. So much has become unraveled, that how are we going to fix this all? And it is, it is not perfect already. I think there needed to have huge amount of changes, but this is not the way it should have been done. I'm glad that I came. It was good to see other people here that are like-minded and who want answers and who are looking for action and real solutions that are practical.
I think, I think Ossoff might have been too polite to tell you that Trump's already been impeached twice by Democratic Party congressmen.
Yes, and twice the Senate did not confirm that, and he is a senator, so that was his side.
In the minority, you know?
Yes, but I don't, I mean, the tide is turning. More and more people are waking up to this.
How much of this is his fault versus your neighbors who voted for Trump and...
I'm not sure I have any neighbors that voted for Trump. I do have family members that did, and honestly, their minds are changing too. Unfortunately, is because they're becoming directly affected. They didn't have empathy to begin with, and so now they're changing their minds because they see it can hurt them, but it is slowly happening. People are seeing that this is actually really hurtful on many fronts to our way of life and to democracy.
So you're still frustrated with him?
Um, I'm going to see what he does. I'm going to follow what he's doing, because he's, he works for me. I am his employer, so I'm going to see what he's doing. And if I don't like it, I'm not going to vote for him again.
Do you need to hear him shout? Do you need to hear, do you need to see him in the street in a protest? What do you...
I think it would be helpful.
I'm glad that he offered to meet with us and to collaborate with the fired folks from
I go to a protest, and if he works for me, why isn't he there? Why aren't my employees showing up? This is our country, and they speak very political.
CDC. I'm frustrated that we had to come out here and ask him in person.
Why can't he just say things like a normal person? Yes, this is wrong.
You know, we've been trying to get his attention.
This is how we change it, instead of, let's, you know, take it apart and, you know, analyze
We've reached out to staffers and haven't heard anything. Same with the union that I'm a part of, they've also reached out to his office and haven't
every little bit. It doesn't have to be that complicated.
been able to get into contact with them.
I mean, I think I heard him say it's wrong a bunch.
So I'm glad that he's open to having a discussion with us or having his staffers, but I am, I'm
With what actions? What did he say specifically he can do? The CDC called him out on not even signing letters.
still a little frustrated. You know, he talked a lot about voting, and we need to get people in Congress to support
What, so much of this is, you need to help me, you need to help me. He's not going to any of these rallies we're going to. He's not helping us with that.
our policies.
It's not on his social media at all.
That may be true, but we're in the right now, and we need efforts right now to support
I mean, this is frustrating, right? This is real life. This is really happening.
public health.
We need people who lead us, not just say they're going to lead us.
And we've given him power by electing him, and he should be using that power to support
I'm frustrated, and I'm not mad at you.
his constituents. And he is on some very important committees, and I would love to know exactly what he's
I'm sorry. So, yeah.
That's all right.
Yes, I'm sorry.
going to do.
Appreciate it.
It's easy to come here and tell us pretty stories about people who've been fired, but
Thanks, thank you.
How did you hear about this town hall?
I was fired. I know what it's like already. I want to know how he's going to help the American people, not just me, that have been directly or will be directly impacted by the CDC cuts and by these cuts on public health. And telling us you're going to advocate for us is not an... I'm glad that he offered to meet with us and to collaborate with the fired folks from CDC. I'm frustrated that we had to come out here and ask him in person. You know, we've been trying to get his attention. We've reached out to staffers and haven't heard anything. Same with the union that I'm a part of. They've also reached out to his office and haven't been able to get into contact with them. So I'm glad that he's open to having a discussion with us or having his staffers. But I am, I'm still a little frustrated. You know, he talked a lot about voting and the, we need to get people in Congress to support our policies. That may be true, but we're in the right now, and we need efforts right now to support public health. And we've given him power by electing him, and he should be using that power to support his constituents. And he is on some very important committees, and I would love to know exactly what he's going to do. It's easy to come here and tell us pretty stories about people who've been fired, but I was fired. I know what it's like already. I want to know how he's going to help the American people, not just me, that have been directly or will be directly impacted by the CDC cuts and by these cuts on public health. And telling us you're going to advocate for us is not an answer. Tell us what you're going to do. Tell us who you're going to meet with. Tell us how you're going to convince other Republicans who you might have some insight, like insider relationships with, how are you going to convince them to support these, these efforts? I mean, hell, invite us to Congress, and we will come talk to people and share about the important work we've done. We are doing our job. We're doing media interviews, we're showing up, we're protesting. We're doing what we're supposed to do as public and as public health officials. I want to see him step up. He has an election coming up, and he should be very cognizant about how he supports his constituents in this moment.
Can you just explain your background, kind of your experience, so we know where some of these concerns are coming from?
Absolutely.
How long were you at the CDC? When were you fired? It sounds like you're a probationary employee.
Yes.
Okay, just sort of break it all down.
Yep, so my background is in public health. I've worked in public health for about six years. I've worked all across different institutions. I worked at HERSA in Boston. I worked for a PR firm doing health comms for CDC. I worked at Emory on a research grant. And then I worked at CDC for over a year in the Division of Overdose Prevention, and so I worked directly with communities to stop kids and teens from using drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. It's a program that is very important. It has lots of bipartisan support. It's called the Drug-Free Communities Branch. And while that branch still exists at CDC, they're significantly understaffed. We served in that branch over 700 individual communities across the entire United States, providing them direct support on substance use prevention. Now, in the whole country, there are less than 10 people to serve all of those coalitions. That means that there is no more one-on-one relationship. If you have a problem in your community, you send it to a random info inbox, and someone eventually gets to your question. There is no more support now for these communities. And that's a program that still exists at CDC. They have completely eliminated entire environmental health programs, including the childhood-led exposure tracking program, which is a very timely issue right now, given what's going on in Milwaukee. And the injury center where the Division of Overdose Prevention sits, that's the group that does domestic violence, child abuse, gun violence, rape, childhood drowning, adult falls. Like, these are all massive programs that have existed at CDC for a really long time. They fired everybody. There's nobody doing this work anymore. And it's frustrating because you don't know that public health impacts you until it's not there to protect you anymore. So who knows what we're going to see in two years, in one year, in five years, in 10 years? People are going to be hurt, they're going to get sick, they're going to die. These are really important societal-level impacts that I want to see more Congress people, senators, House members, stand up for. And truthfully, our governor, I would love to see him talk about this as well.
Can you just say your first and last name, and then I'll let us know some others.
Yeah. My name is Abby, A-B-B-Y, and my last name is Tighe.
And you were fired when?
I was fired in February.
February, okay.
What part of town you live in?
I'm from Decatur.
Okay.
But I used to live in Cobb County.
Real quickly, to what extent is, would you support Senator Ossoff when he ran the first time, and is there a chance that you would not support him if he, if he's not as responsive as you'd like him to be?
When did he run the first time?
Six years ago.
Well, in 2020, yes. I supported him in 2020. I lived in Georgia at that point, so yes, I did support him, and I will likely support him again. I mean, it depends on if there's a primary. I kind of doubt that will be the case. But I, at this point in my life, Democrats seem to be more aligned with the public health kind of agenda that I support, and so I will likely vote for him, but that doesn't mean I will not try to hold him accountable and annoy him and bother him until he takes us seriously and takes this issue seriously.